Yes, it's sitting.
Mm?
Love it.
There we go.
Oh, the covered chaos. It's at the cupboard.
Yeah, it sits here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you again for your patience and welcome to our September 19th regular Board of Education meeting. We are going to start this evening with a special presentation. Return over to you, Dr. Winkelman.
Thank you, Sandra. So we started a new tradition this school year in Barrington. In addition to our high school representatives giving reports of what's going on at your school, since we are a unit district, we decided to expand that and invite students from elementary, middle, and high school to participate in our board meetings tonight. So it is my pleasure to introduce Eliana Collins, fifth grader at Lines Elementary School, who's going to give us a report on Lines.
Thank you for inviting me to talk about how special Lines is. My school is like a second home to me. I'd never want to leave. Our teachers are kind and our principal is so funny. We all love when Dr. Halberg visits our classroom each week to read aloud to us. Our school has so many fun activities I can't keep count. Running club and fun runs, literacy night, bingo night. There's fun for everyone. It's hard for me to choose, it's hard for me to choose a favorite, but some of my most special memories at Lines have been the speech tournament last year, Camp Timberly a couple of weeks ago, Lines on the Run, our hot chocolate hustle, and choir. I have so many great memories of my friends at things like the ice cream social, field day, our Halloween parade, parties, and other events. This year, I'm very excited to participate in the new creativity project, to perform in my first band concert, running the fifth grade mile, and going to see a play with my class. I also participate in our extended program at Lines. Our teacher, Mrs. Ketchen, teaches us more than just reading and math. She shows us that there's more than one way to solve a problem. She leads discussions and teaches us that to respect each other's opinions. She challenges us to be more independent rather than just rely on her. She teaches us to think critically and go down deep into explaining things and not just staying at the surface. She encourages us to create our own ideas. The thing I'm most proud of from my time in extended has been how much I've changed as a student. When I started, I was afraid of making mistakes and not being able to solve problems. I've learned how to overcome my feelings and fears and use the strategies I've been taught to do my best. All the Lines teachers are what makes Lines special. Every year, I want to leave, I never want to leave my classroom because I have made such a special bond with my classroom teacher. Then the next year, I get a new amazing teacher. Our teachers organize things to make school really fun. In our class, Ms. Walter allows us to experiment with different mediums. Ms. Relain organizes scavenger hunts and a flashlight reading to make reading super fun, even though I already think reading is very fun. Mr. Kay has this exercise, but he finds so many fun ways for us to have fun too. Teachers never give up on us for having a hard time learning something new. They always make extra time, they always make extra time to make sure that we understand what we're learning, and I know they're always cheering us on.
That was an amazing report. Thank you for coming tonight and sharing with us a little bit about your perspective and your experiences at Lines. This time, I'd like to open it up to the board. Any questions or additional?
Was there anything else that you wanted to share with us?
Oh, wait, wait, hold on on that, hold on, hold on. We've got a little bit of, we've got a little bit of time for that. It's probably the worst kept secret in the room right now.
Sorry, did we jump the gun?
I wanted to give her her moment in the spotlight if there was any additional.
Any questions? Eliana's report.
Do you know what play you guys are going to see?
Um, I have no idea.
But it's gonna be amazing, whatever it is.
I have a question. So Lines was the first elementary school to do overnight since the pandemic, since the start of this. So that is really cool, at Timberly. So tell me some of your favorite activities that you had at Timberly.
I, my two, my top three favorite activities were the horseback riding trail ride, the zip line, and the animal encounters. I could hold a chinchilla.
Hold a chinchilla! That's awesome. Well, you made me want to go to Lines, so thank you for your report.
I have one. What's your favorite book you like to read?
That's a good one.
Is it the book that Dr. Halberg is reading in class? Whenever that happens?
Yes.
Good answer, good answer. Smart.
I know I enjoy listening to Dr. Halberg read books in class.
What's the favorite parent activity? You talked about all the great things to do at Lines and bringing the parents in.
My, probably the favorite, wait, repeat the question?
Are there activities that the parents can participate in also?
Oh, um, yes. So there's, um, at the Halloween parade, the parents can all stand, watch the parade, and they can also be room parents. And then they can also come to like the ice cream social.
I want to go back to Grace. Halloween parade is one of my favorites as a Lines parent, for sure.
Have you been able to go into the new STEM room yet? Have you been able to use it?
Yes, I have.
So did your fellow students like the room? Are they happy with how it turned out?
I think we're all very happy with the room. We all think it looks extremely cool. And I think we're all using it pretty well.
Good, good to hear.
And it doesn't interfere with anything else that's happening in that, in that space?
I don't think so, no. I'm not sure.
I just wanted to ask, how did you bring all of these wonderful people here tonight? This is the biggest crowd we've had.
Pretty impressive. Very impressive, Eliana.
Your school has spirit to be here.
We might cry when they all leave.
Eliana, is anyone joining here tonight that you'd like to introduce?
Uh, yeah, so my dad, my mom, my, wait, my brother. My older brother, my little brother, Annie, Emma, Kira, Elie, CJ, Mrs. Ketchen, Mrs. Scott, Mrs. Capitox, Miss Dowdy.
You know what, I do appreciate you introducing everyone, and I have to say, when we did the pledge tonight, I could see the smiles on our executive team and our board because there was little voices in the pledge tonight, which is just awesome because this is what we do, right? We, we work on behalf of students. So thank you, everybody that came out tonight to support Eliana and her update on Line School. So how about one more round of applause? For participating, we have a Barrington 220 backpack with some goodies in it for you and a really nice certificate. But now, President Bradford, if you would like to ask her a question, if there's anything else tonight that is going on.
Is there any other news or anything else happening at Lines Elementary right now?
Yes, actually.
Good question.
I don't have anything else to say. It's a great honor to be able to share some outstanding news with everyone about Lines. This afternoon, Lines Elementary School was named among the very best schools in America through the U.S. Department of Education's National Blue Ribbon Award.
Wow. Please continue.
Lines is one of only 16 public schools in Illinois and one of 313 public schools in America to be honored with this prestigious recognition for 2023. A little history about the blue ribbon. Now, now in its 40th year, the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program has awarded about 10,000 awards to more than 9,000 schools. Every year, the U.S. Department of Education works with all 50 state departments of education to identify and nominate outstanding schools for this award based on student academic achievement measures and programs and progress toward closing achievement gaps. A few schools in America have won the blue ribbon more than once in fact. In fact, Lines has now won the blue ribbon three times, having won it in 1994, 2008, and 2023. Lines is now tied with Grove for the most. Lines is now tied with Grove for the most blue ribbons in District 220, something Dr. Halberg is very happy about. Dr. Halberg has some competition issues.
The truth comes out.
Don't we all?
Lines will be honored in Washington, D.C. by the U.S. Department of Education on November 16th and 17th.
Awesome.
While I know Dr. Halberg is a little competitive, but we're working on it, Dr. Halberg, would you like to say a few words on behalf of Line School?
Please, thank you.
So I would like all of Line students to stand up and former Line students.
I was gonna say alumni.
Yeah. So, um, I guess just to say, thank you, guys, you can sit down. I just wanted to say to Dr. Winkelman, the board, thank you so much for your support, for everything that you do to empower our teachers to be able to meet the needs of our kids. Ms. Collins here is just one out of 507 very special children that go to Lines. And really, the best part is that what Lines was able to accomplish and is being recognized for right now is taking place in all Barrington schools, and I think that's the important thing to remember. Right now, the spotlight is on us. And good stuff is happening in every classroom in the district, and it's because of our tremendous parental support. So we couldn't do without our families and obviously our rock star staff. So it's an honor and a privilege, and I'm happy for our community. So thank you.
All right, so little instructions, right? I do not want to take away from Eliana's spotlight and moment of presenting to our board because you did an amazing job and we really appreciate you being here. So if we could do, if I could ask Samantha to come on up, if we could do a picture of you with our board with the certificate, right, for your, your presentation tonight, but then also, we, we got a little busy today. Mrs. Maruki did a little crafting, and what I'd like to do is we put together a blue ribbon. So thank you, Mrs. Maruki, for putting this together for us today. What I'd like to do is have Eliana's picture, and then I would like to invite the Line staff and students to come up and join Eliana and our board for a picture. So we're gonna do two for, if that's okay. Just please oblige me of just a little bit of time to do this. So first, let's have your picture taken.
Like the best picture. I mean, I'm there. All right. Sixty ribbons. But I gave it to you. A massive, functional pop order.
All right. Now, can we invite Line staff and the rest of our students? Come on.
Kids in the front.
Congratulations!
Congratulations.
Maybe we'll just not just get a picture.
Okay.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Are the alumni at the Lines Elementary?
All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you, guys.
Eliana just hit the bar so high.
Congratulations.
You're awesome, please, sit down.
I hope you turn it off like a bus. Should I show? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Eliana, you just hit the bar so high. Congratulations.
You're awesome, please, sit down.
I hope you turn it off like a bus. Should I show? Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. No. I want the bad side. Yeah, man, that just stinks. Stinks.
I know, I misunderstood. I misunderstood.
I'm asking, I'm not telling. I'm wondering, yeah. It's harder than it has to show up, yeah.
You look good in it. And witty and funny.
I know. That's why I said that. She's on, she's on.
Love that.
She can wait.
She's on.
I would love to stay, but.
Not.
Do it again, yeah.
Is proof? He's documenting your presence.
Eliana. It's an Ariana. All right. So your teacher is the most winningest football coach in the MSL?
Yeah, in the history of the MSL. That's right.
All right. Lines School of Spirit.
Get to the front.
Congratulations.
Eliana just hit the bar so high.
You're awesome, please. Good job.
I hope you get turned off like a busman.
Thank you. First one, awesome. Our one, the X side.
I know, I misunderstood. I misunderstood.
I'm asking, I'm not telling. I'm wondering, yeah.
It's harder than they have to show up, yeah.
And witty and funny.
That's why he's gonna do this stuff.
She's on, she's on.
Love that.
She can wait.
She's on.
I would love to stay, but.
Do what you can, yeah. His proof? He's documenting your presence.
It's an Arianna.
Okay. Now, we're gonna let him know. All right. So your teacher is the most winningest football coach in the MSL?
Yeah, in the history of the MSL.
That's right. All right.
Lyons School spirit.
All right, that was a, this is a very tough act to follow, and I guess I have a little bit of Dr. Halberg in me, because I've had students at both Grove and Lyons. So just, so I got six blue ribbons in my family. Anyway, just trying to have a little fun. So thanks again to Lyons Elementary, Dr. Halberg, and Eliana. This is just another blue ribbon example of our mission statement, which is empowering personal excellence in every learner. So to continue my report, homecoming is this Saturday. Several of us are gonna march in the parade, and then, since we're early on in the parade, several more are gonna join us, and we'll watch together the parade in front of this admin center. So you can look for us there as we celebrate our homecoming. After the parade, we're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony, so we're gonna hear tonight more about our Build Two Twenty, so let's keep all these ribbon cutting ceremonies on our radar. We have Barrington High School this Saturday at around eleven fifteen immediately following the parade, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting ceremony, followed by tours of the high school and our homecoming game, homecoming football varsity game. Early Learning Center will be on Tuesday, October third at three P.M., and Lyons Elementary School, the blue ribbon, the latest blue ribbon award-winning school, will be Monday, October sixteenth at three thirty P.M. Board, we also have State Superintendent Tony Sanders coming this week. He will be with us on Friday, September twenty-second. I believe it starts at nine A.M. We're gonna visit Lyons Station and the high school. So please let Janine Stark know if you are planning to attend. We also have, or Ed Redd has, their annual kickoff lunch on Friday, October sixth, eleven thirty, at the Chicago Western North Shore. The guest speakers can be Eric Santos from Learning Technology Center. Again, please let Janine Stark know if you are going to attend, Board. Just to update the board, you already know, but to update the community as well, we did not have our board self-evaluation today, as we spoke about at the last meeting. That has been moved to October third, and we are planning to have a four-thirty start. So please let myself know or Dr. Winkelman know if you're not able to attend on October third, starting at four-thirty. And thank you again, Board, for your patience as we needed to secure a facility or to have that discussion. We have talked about a social dinner, and I'm not sure how many responses that Ms. Stark has had, probably not a lot, so I'm going to suggest that we look at Tuesdays off the board meeting and maybe ask us for availability on an off Tuesday evening to have a social dinner in November, December, and start there and see if we can get a date solidified. What else? One more thing, tonight, we have an action item on the budget, and as you may remember, Diane, this will be new for you, but we have to sign the budget form, so please don't leave tonight without signing the budget form after our action. Okay. And that concludes my report. Next up is public comment, and we have no one signed up for public comment, so we will call public comment closed, and we will turn to Dr. Winkelman for his report.
All right. Thank you very much. God bless you. Bless you. All right. To begin my report tonight, I want to acknowledge that we had Safety Week last week, and I think having a specific focus on safety has been a real benefit to our school district. Being prepared in the event of an emergency is a big step in the right direction of knowing how to respond, and so I want to thank our staff for leading several activities and drills last week throughout the week. I also want to thank and give a special shout out to our first responders, our police and fire departments, that helped us with those drills, and then also a thank you to our Director of Safety and Security, Austin Johnson, who is hanging out in the back of the room, and he has a presentation on safety in Two Twenty tonight, and he'll give us more information about our safety plans in our school district. In addition, September, there are several events and celebrations that are taking place. September is Hispanic Heritage Month. You'll see this alive and well in our schools if you just walk in the front door and start walking through the halls, many bulletin boards, music being played on certain days throughout the week, curricular experiences by reading books by Hispanic authors or with Hispanic characters, poems, recognition and discussion about important figures and change-makers. There's just a lot of activity going on in our schools. In addition, September, we recognize Patriot Day on September eleventh annually. Most of our schools celebrate with a announcement, remembering that day to start the day and the importance of that day, in addition to lessons and activities in our social studies and our U.S. history curriculum. And then also Constitution Day is in September, on September seventeenth. And so obviously, learning about the Constitution, there are learning targets throughout the grade levels, right? It starts with just students having an understanding that we have a document that helps explain our rights as citizens in the United States at our elementary levels, a basic understanding of that, which then evolves in middle school of having a better understanding of the parts of the Constitution, understand the preamble, the articles, and the amendments, and then high school, you start to get into complex conversations about different points of view associated with different historical events tied to the Constitution. So lots of learning and different activities in the month of September. I will start to incorporate these monthly themes and events and activities in my report each month, because there's always lots of things going on in Two Twenty. All right, so for my next report, I warned the board I was gonna be pretty student-centric as superintendent and bringing lots of people to board meetings, and so in addition, there was a microphone here, and it went somewhere, so I'd like to invite Chloe Joy Hutton, one of our seniors at Barrington High School, to come up and share the news of a little bit of update on our flexible learning program. I'm gonna stop there, because she's gonna help explain some name changes and how you arrived at that process. So Chloe, please.
Hi. I'm definitely going to be shown up by a fifth grader. I don't have a script for you, sorry. So basically, GEM is our new program for flexible learning. It stands for Grove, Excel, Magnify. Basically, we all, we have this really cool new flexible learning space in the high school, the old senior locker bank, and we all meet in there for a certain amount of hours a day, and you have your basic subject. So the English teacher's right here. So we go in, and we basically get to choose our own topics, customize our own learning, and this basically means we have our standards that are set by the state, right? And we get to choose our products, projects. I am doing pageantry, I compete in beauty pageants, and I am making my passion into my experience in school and combining them, so I enjoy what I'm learning, but I'm still meeting the standards of what is set by the state. So I'm here, because this is our logo, and I actually created this with the help of Annie. She came in and she visited us. We were told that since it was a student-led program, the students were to make the logo and make everything, so we kind of came up with the name, and we had a couple different ideas for the logo, and Annie helped us finalize it, and so this is our brand-new logo for that, for our brand-new program.
Thank you, Chloe.
That's awesome.
So keeping students in the middle of the equation, right? We thought it would be best to have our students actually work together that are participating in the program to actually name it something a little bit more creative than flexible learning program. So I love GEM, I love what it stands for, and then just to elaborate on, Annie is Mrs. Louiezy, our graphic design employee in the district. Actually, so we had one of our employees that is doing that as her career, go in and work with our students to create this logo, so just a lot of intersections here of trying to make sure our students are involved and they're getting those experiences in authentic ways by combining, you know, the talents of our staff. So Chloe, thank you for taking time tonight to join us.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me.
Any questions or from the board?
Chloe, I think it's fascinating that you're studying pageantry and kind of merging it with our standards. Can you give us a little bit more of an example of, I know school just started a few weeks ago, but what does that look like in terms of projects or what you're learning?
Yeah, so some of our standards are, the one that I'm using right now, is finding good sources to look from, to find more information on whatever your topic is. And I have learned that looking at pageant websites isn't a great way to find cons about pageantry. So I have been all over searching the school search engines, and I've found, I've learned so much about research just by looking at stuff that I love to look at. If you give me a book, you say, here, find a bunch of stuff about this book and research it, I don't know. No thanks. But if you put something in, like my passion with it, I'm going to want to do it so much more. So putting that together, I've made presentations already, we did, I just presented what my project was going to be, I'm gonna do little TikTok videos. So, you know, being in front of a camera, I like to do that, I obviously love to talk, and so it kind of combines everything, and it's really fun.
That sounds really awesome. Love to hear it.
Thank you, Chloe. Appreciate you taking the time tonight.
Thank you so much. Great job.
All right, I just have a couple more items to present. You may have heard in our Lyons student report, Eliana mentioned one of the things she loves about Lyons School is the creativity project. This is a project that we've put in place this year with the support of the Educational Foundation. So this is a pilot, it's an after-school program. It's being offered this year at Grove and Lyons, as we're just starting to launch. We have ninety-five students in grades three through five that are participating. Learning goals connected to these creativity projects embrace a real-world application and purpose, be designed for a specific audience, and be collaborative or contribute to a collaborative effort, right? So these are the types of activities, and you heard the interest that Chloe Joy provided about how she's more, you know, more interested in her learning when it's an area that she has more control over, and she's helped, you know, inform and be able to pick something that she's interested in, very similar with the creativity projects, right? So we have those goals or outcomes, but then the students help inform what do they want to study based on their creative area that they want to kind of delve into. So we'll have more information on this, but we just launched it, just had our first opportunity meeting with some of the students, so I wanted to share that with the board. In addition, we mentioned several times it's homecoming week, so I just wanted to also comment and encourage people to participate. I know our high schoolers are having a lot of fun this week, we had a pep assembly Monday, we've got themes every day, we've got pancake breakfast, a parade, football game, and a dance coming up, so it's a fun week over at Barrington High School as we celebrate homecoming and welcome our alumni back to our community. And then, last but not least, I wanted to just provide a little bit of additional information. You know, Dr. Halberg's competitive, I guess something that he can hold on to is that, I believe that's the first ever where a student announced the blue ribbon in their school district. So hopefully that helps satisfy him that that is a little bit of uniqueness, but I did want to comment, Eliana didn't mention, we do have a number of schools, starting back in nineteen ninety-two, that have earned the blue ribbon distinction for Barrington, and this makes number twelve for our school district, so I thought that was worth noting. She may have mentioned this, but there is twenty schools this year in Illinois that are receiving the award, and there's three hundred and fifty-three nationally, so we're in good company there of, you know, the higher achieving district schools in our nation. So, and that concludes my report, unless there's any questions from the board.
Just in case we have any principals that might be as competitive as Dr. Halberg, what other schools have received the blue ribbon?
I was gonna say, Rosalyn's gotten it twice.
All right, here we go. So I had a feeling this was gonna come up. So Grove has won the award three times, Barrington High School has won the award once, Lyons three times now, Rosalyn twice, Barbara Rose once, Huff one time, and Countryside one time, so for a total of twelve. So Grove and Lyons are leading the way with three. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is informational reports. We had a couple different reports this week. Are there any questions or comments?
I just want to comment, I like that we've now said what we're doing about the FOIA, that there's a response that, you know, what happened, so I really appreciate that feedback. That helps.
You're welcome. We heard that request and thought that would be a way to kind of.
And we noted.
Good. Any other questions? All right, let's move on to Board Committee Reports.
Well, I'll start. The referendum committee met. I don't want to steal the thunder, because Build Two Twenty is gonna have a presentation, but I just want to emphasize for our community a couple things. Lyons is done, and it was actually done ahead of time, ahead of our original schedule, and the Early Learning Center is also done. So of the elementary schools, we just have North Barrington and Rose that are still getting work done, and those should be done sometime early in the second semester. And then, as everybody knows, DHS is still going strong. We have a lot that's done, and we have a lot that's still gonna be happening, so it's very exciting that, you know, there's still, the money is still being spent, and we have some, you know, really good things happening. And the other thing I just want to tease everybody about, the fine arts design is undergoing, is underway, conceptual work is underway, and I'm very excited that next month, we're gonna have a presentation about the options we have for our fine arts, because as everyone remembers, in this referendum, what was funded was just the conceptual design, and then we have to decide what we're gonna do next, but I'm very excited about that. So as I say, the Build Two Twenty meeting or discussion is gonna be coming, and listen, because it's just very exciting, everything that's been happening.
Anyone else? I was able to attend the foundation meeting this month, because Leah was unavailable, so I was able to attend, and the only, I just wanted to say thank you again to the foundation for all of the work that they do for this district. Basically, we, they went over their annual report, and everybody gave an update on the report, and I have a copy of that for you. Okay, so I'll give that to you for the meeting. All right. Consent agenda. I will read what's in the consent agenda, but do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. On our consent agenda this week, we have minutes from, closed minutes from August fifteenth and open and closed minutes from September fifth of this year. We have several finance reports. We have the wage and payroll report for August, the treasures report for August, revenues and expenditures for August, and the bill list for September. And we have a revised personnel report that was updated yesterday. Any questions? All right, let's do a roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Barry Alchuler.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Let's move to our action items. We have an action item for second reading of board policy. Do we have a motion to approve the two policies as presented?
So moved.
Second. I think they're both updated per our feedback from last meeting. The policies that we would be approving or up for approval are five colon one twenty-five, personal technology and social media usage and conduct, as well as six colon ten, educational philosophy and objectives. Is there any comments or questions about those policies? All right. As I recall, these were all updated for some legal changes that were, some laws that were changed, so that was those, why those were updated, and I think we injected some of our own language in a couple of them. All right, let's do a roll call.
And change the order of some bullet points.
Oh, that's right. The order of the bullet point reads very nicely.
Barry Alchuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next up, we have an action item. Do we have a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget?
So moved.
Okay. All right, do you want to give an overview or anything? I mean, we had a, we had a hearing last meeting, we've had this posted on our website for several weeks.
We did, we also did a budget presentation and attended budget stage. There have been some minor changes since then, rearrangements and things, but in totality it's about the same. The only thing I would remind the board is that we do have salaries making up a large portion of the school budget. portion of the school budget, and we are currently negotiating with the VDA, which is our Licensed Employee Association, and depending on the results of that, we may need to do an adjustment on the budget, amended budget at some point. But once that's done, we'll have a better feel as to whether we need to, we may not need to, it really just depends on how that goes and where things fall relative to budget.
Okay. Any other questions, Board?
If I could just make a comment, Dr. Bynne, I want to give you and the team kudos for being able to keep the expenditures increasing at only 3.3%. In this environment, it's very impressive. And this is on top of, and I should mention that, you know, the fact that you guys were able to put purchased services, supplies, capital LA, and other objects at 2.5 is somewhat of a miracle after coming back from last year, where we did purchase services and supplies, if I recall, at zero. So there's certainly, you know, a good eye for maintaining, you know, purchases that are required and then in areas that are not taking those out, so kudos to you and the team for doing that.
Thank you very much, and certainly for my colleagues here at the table, and also mention Miss Lauter, who does an incredible amount of work with administrators all across the district, you know, it is a challenge, but we're glad to try to continue our work with the life initiatives. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Remains one of our top priorities, is all it's, right?
Always.
All right, let's do a roll call.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Barry Alchuler.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
No question, I'll have to sign it first.
Sir, is there any confusion, please don't leave.
Motion passes. All right, we have one more action item. Do we have a motion to approve settlement pending litigation filed against the district and various district employees in the Circuit Court of Cook County, Illinois, relating to a 2017 incident?
So moved.
Second. Can we do a roll call?
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Barry Alchuler.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Let's move on to our very exciting discussion topics for this evening. First up is the proposed academic calendar for 2024-2025.
In your packet, it goes through with the information provided to you from me and the Calendar Committee on the proposed 24-25 school year. This school year reflects the 176 student attendance days, and is a little late per our policy, but because we changed the policy and we looked at new wording and making sure that our process was feasible, this has been brought to the attention of the Board as soon as we could after we got the policy finalized and completed, and looking at the calendar. So if you look at our policy, which is on the last page of the packet that I gave you, 620 school year calendar and day, there's a few things that I just want to point out with this calendar. The first one is under number two, there will be a target start date of August 20th, no earlier than August 18th, and no later than August 22nd. With this school year, 24-25, this is actually an election year, and it's our first election year that caused the conversation on why we should change board policy to help reflect some of the complications that we have when we're looking at trying to meet the board policy, but then also being considerate of our calendar and time off, and making sure that it's all feasible and best to student instruction. So this year, it is a calendar, or I'm sorry, it is a election year, so we do have that extra day off that is mandated by the state in November, which is November 5th, and with a lot of feedback from not only our Calendar Committee, but with our Labor Management Committee, and from the community, we looked at how, you know, because how that falls, we technically have a day off on that Friday for in-service, and so the last election year, we had students come back on that Monday, and then we're off on that Tuesday. So what we were able to do through Calendar Committee and Labor Management Committee was allow it so that we had two days off, almost like a mini fall break, so that we can have the best instruction for our students and not have that gap in that day. So that is one thing out of our procedures that I wanted the Board to consider. The other one is number three, which is the exception, because usually we do it 12 months prior to the start of the following school year. We're pretty close, it's September now, but again, because we were making sure that we were looking over everything and finalizing policy, that is a little behind, but we want to get that done as soon as possible. And then if we look at number seven, there will be a target of no more than 10 student attendance days difference between the first and the second semester. With this one, we do have 12 days, but that also goes back to the election. So actually, in the first semester, we have 81 days, and in the second semester, we have 93 days. So I just wanted to point those exceptions out. We will officially start, the first day will be August 19th, which is a day earlier than what we're used to, accustomed to, but how it falls, that's a Monday anyway, so it actually, you know, might work that we're going for a full week. And then our last day would be that last week in May, which is May 30th. So any questions?
So I'm assuming you discussed the difference of more days in the second semester than usual in the first semester, because I know that high school had most issues with that in the past.
Correct.
If I remember correctly.
Correct.
It's gonna be okay?
Yes. And Steve McWilliams is part of both, actually, he was both part of the Calendar Committee and Labor Management when we went through this. And we do have representatives from the high school on there.
So yes, they did.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, they did. They did it, yes. It was a little bit vaguely worded, so yeah.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
It was a concern in the past, right?
Yes.
That's why that policy was the way it was, so, yeah.
I guess I really appreciate the thought and consideration, and kind of, I want to use the phrase, taking advantage of, you know, the 19th being a Monday and the 20th being a Tuesday, and using that to move that start date to that Monday in order to accomplish things like that break and, a little bit longer break in November.
Yeah, I think this 24-25 calendar reflects a lot of acknowledging the parameter set in that policy, but also being able to kind of give it the, if you look at it, it's odd when kids come in on a Monday, they're off on a Tuesday, and they try to come back. I mean, we're trying to use that little bit of just thoughtfulness, but also really adhering to the policy. And I think this calendar reflects the ability for us to stay consistent, but also make those little bit of adjustments that just seem to make sense for continuity of instruction and just for our families to be able to plan accordingly as well.
So thanks to the Board for allowing, you know, the change in the policy that was made a few months ago, so it enables the Calendar Committee to have some flexibility.
Yeah.
I mean, November's looking good.
Right. So then, next steps is to move this towards action and adoption at the October 3rd Board Meeting. All right.
Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
All right, so next up is a safety and security update. Dr. Winkelman already alluded to this.
Yeah.
You know, Dr. Winkelman didn't steal too much of my thunder here tonight.
I tried to be brief.
No, it's all good. It's all good. Good evening, everybody, thanks for having me. Wanted to provide just a few updates on where we are, where we stand with safety 220. You know, we're fortunate enough to, everything we do to continue our mission, and thinking about the students and where they are and what they're doing, and safety 220 and safety and security, we always keep that in mind. I will even be reaching out to buildings and going and talking with kids this year to make sure that, get their opinion on how we're doing with safety 220, which is in alignment with our strategic priorities through the health and well-being priority, as well as the stewardship, to review those resources that we have in place and make sure that everything we're doing is in alignment. I will say that, you know, I'm fortunate to go to numerous conferences around the state and work with other directors of safety and security, and the one thing that I do know every time I am at one of these committee meetings or conferences, whatever it may be, I'm always pleased with what we have here in Barrington. We are very fortunate for what we have in place, the resources that we have, and, you know, thanks to our community and the Board and all the people that do what they do, the budgeting, everything that we do to make sure that we can keep our buildings safe and secure. But we are fortunate and we are a leader in safety and security across the state, so, and, you know, Dr. Winkelman alluded to the fact that we are so lucky to have the relationship with our first responders. Not that there's not good things happening in other districts, but we again are a leader in that regard, and I think you could ask any of the chiefs, fire and police, and they would agree. And they appreciate all that they do with us, and that we are on the same page throughout our safety practices. Couple other great things we have going through the referendum process, you'll start to notice in every one of our buildings, you'll see these improvements throughout. We have new video intercoms, our camera systems are amazing, this is just a screenshot, but you can see the clarity that we have in our cameras. Our old analog cameras were so blurry that you could barely make out that it was even a person standing there. These are in every entrance, we have secure vestibules, door contacts and card access that has just enhanced so much, and they're all angry. The best part about our features is that every bit of it kind of comes together. When somebody comes through a door and they use their badge, it connects to a camera so you can see who is actually coming in, that it does match who it should be. And so the safety aspects of things, really impressive with what we have going, so very fortunate in that regard. The door contacts are there to, and we'll continue to improve this at all of our buildings, and continue to add this to the doors, but they will allow us to know if a door is propped open for any reason, and give us alerts to make sure that we don't have any people getting into buildings that shouldn't be coming into buildings, and things along that line. So again, just some features that are very impressive around the district, and as we continue that process that you alluded to over at the high school, we'll continue to add them in there. So that is a work in progress, but at all of our elementaries and middle schools, you will see these things each and every day. Dr. Winkelman did allude to our Safety Week, I think it was a very productive Safety Week that we were able to have, working again with our first responders. We are mandated by the state to do three fire drills, a tornado drill, the bus evacuation drill, and a law enforcement drill. And so we did these in conjunction with those first responders. Every building put a little bit of their own twist into it. At the high school, we even worked on regular evacuation, and some of the students in the audience or the room here probably allude to the fact that we evacuated a little bit differently out of the building. So if we were ever to have a gas leak or something along that line that just needed to get us out of the building, we have a location to move away from the building as opposed to just everybody getting out. So every building works on those sorts of things, and, you know, we want to promote safety and security amongst not only our students, but with our staff, and also we sent out those videos and information to our community, because we want them to be engaged and have those conversations with their students, because I think they can give some good insight to other kids before they enter into our buildings. So a great week all in all, and a good focus to start off the school year and really make sure that kids and parents and staff, everybody's ready for anything that may arise, so. Also want to remind everybody, you know, we did switch last year, our anonymous tip is Safe to Help, so we utilize that, so if there's, see something, say something, and people are reaching out for any type of threat or bullying, harassment needs, we have this system that is free to us from, through the state of Illinois, 365 days, 24/7, there's somebody that will take the call, email, text, and they will respond. If they deem that it is a critical, you know, emergency, they will, they have our dispatch numbers, and they will dispatch the police to that student, especially if they have enough information. So within these reports, our principals, assistant principals, myself, other administrators throughout the district, we get all of these reports and then we act on them right away. It's a nice platform, we're able to keep the notes and know exactly what occurred, where it came from, and things along that line, to respond and help all of our students that may be in any sort of need. So it's a great system, and I think we've seen a lot of success with that. And then this is just a reminder, besides that terrible picture up there, everything else is really good. We do have a Safety 220 webpage that I'd like to try and have everybody continue to go to, the resources that are there, you can see Safe to Help. There's also parent tips on this page for what to do during emergencies, and it gives a comprehensive look into what a parent might do depending on the emergency that they are in, making sure that they are listening to the district and the first responders for that critical information, as although people might be there and there may be social media and throwing things out there, it's more important to find out that factual information and what needs to be done to get through that emergency situation. But a lot of great tips on this that you can go to, and I highly recommend that people do, is this tab on the side that you can barely see, it does say, "See Something, Say Something," when you're on your computer, that immediately directs you to the Safe to Help webpage. So that's, no matter what page you are on, that is always there. Short and sweet. Any questions?
Thanks so much for this, Mr. Johnson. Just wondering, during Safety Week, are students, they're reminded to, that they can go to See Something, Say Something, because I know that that's helped us as a school district a lot, and there have been incidents that have come up, but they're pretty, they're reminded pretty regularly, right, as part of Safety Week, or?
They are, yeah. In the very first video that I did, I remind them about that, so that opening welcome video, I talked about it. The teachers do integrate that to what they're saying, and again, they do it in very different ways, so I look different for a third grade class compared to a, you know, maybe English class, but they make sure that they are talking.
I'm glad we have clear video cameras, too. It's helpful.
They're pretty impressive, they really are.
Any other questions? Thank you for doing this work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We know our students are ready to learn when they feel safe, so appreciate everything that you all do to keep us safe schools.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is our Bill 220 update.
Nicole, welcome.
We're so excited.
Our welcome board, Nicole and I are happy to be here with an update on where we are with our Bill 220 work. We'll run through the project timeline, talk about remaining design work, talk about construction, what's been recently done, as well as what's to come, and we'll go through a little bit of information on our financial status. Starting out with the project timeline, well, for, I've got a little blow up of this on the next slide, but here's the point that I want to make for you, even after my glasses aren't doing though. Where we are right now, if you can see my mouse moving on the screen, this is right about where we are now. And so if you look at that, most, everything is done, most of our schools are done, and what's really left? You know, and as Barry pointed out earlier, really, I thought I should just flip up the slides for him, he went through a bunch of great stuff for you, and he noted that we delivered early on a couple of our schools, and it's very exciting. So even though where we are in the timeline is just before when they're supposed to be due, we're actually able to get students in those spaces every school year, I think that's really great. So what's left? Well, we've got a lot of work on the high school, so we've got over a year-plus worth of work left on the high school, and we'll talk more about that in a little bit. We also have additions for Barbara Rose and North Barrington that are scheduled to be completed after the winter break, so early in the year, as soon as we can get those done and get students in, we will do so. But right now, we're looking at our original timeline around sometime in February. But right now, we're looking at our original timeline around sometime in February. So, design work. Well, back in the old days, when Dr. Winkelman used to sit over here and give you these, there was a lot to talk about in this section. And we were doing a lot of design work.
The slideshow format looks familiar.
It does. It's very familiar. There's nothing wrong with copying a good thing, that's all I'm going to say. Very important form of flattery. But what do we have left in design work? We really don't have anything left on the major construction that we're doing. All the design work is completed. So the additions that are being built at our two remaining elementary schools have been designed, is how we're able to build it. All the work at the high school has been designed. So what's left is the fine performing visual arts analysis. What might something look like at Barrington High School if we're looking to improve that space? So what we've done is a facility assessment on that space. We've taken a look at usage patterns, how the space is being used. And it's not just the auditorium we're talking about, it's all of that programming that we do. We've engaged in visioning with our community, with our students, with our staff, with the board. And we are in the process of doing some conceptual designs and ideas. And a lot of that work has been done. And as we're presenting to you coming up in just a couple of weeks, I mean, feel free to take longer if you want to wait a little while longer to see it, we wouldn't complain. But we're planning on coming back in a couple of weeks to show you what that work looks like. That's the design work. Well, what about construction? Nicole, you want to talk to us about the construction? Let's go ahead and start at the Early Learning Center.
Okay, so Early Learning Center, as we talked about before, that space is complete, it's already been delivered. At ELC, we had a lot of safety and security upgrades, mechanical upgrades, but you see here in this picture, we've got the new secure vestibule with transaction window that all of our schools will have. And then out front, we have some graphic film on the front of the building, the safety followers. So a lot of safety and security improvements to ELC this summer. Moving on to lines, as Eliana talked about earlier, the STEM room looks very cool. Kids are enjoying it. We're getting a lot of feedback from the students. They really like that space. Sensory room is already built there also. We did a lot of interior renovation to that space. So again, mechanical upgrades and safety and security improvements are a big part of Build 220 and have been done at every building. So that, that's been done at lines as well. Moving on to North Barrington. So, what you see in these pictures is the STEM room that will be completed, February, scheduled for February 24th, after the new year, a little bit of exterior and then the interior after the walls were put up for the future STEM room. But we also have completed the sensory room there, safety and security improvements, some restroom upgrades and mechanical upgrades throughout the space. Barbara Rose is very similar, as you all know, has the same footprint as North Barrington does, so same improvements. And again, a few pictures of the STEM room, but we've also completed all the same upgrades at Rose that we have at North Barrington and other schools. And the high school. Everything about the high school is a little bit different, a little bit bigger, a little bit more, three years of construction versus maybe one or one and a half. So, what we've done this summer is a lot of work, a lot of interior work. We focused on the outside before, we've done some more outside work, but mostly interior work. So, part of the Build 220 objectives were PE and student wellness improvements. So you see here our new weight room, but we've also done a cardio lab, a new auxiliary gym. We've done a dance studio. Down below that is a picture of the new nurses' office, which ties into the student wellness area, which is all of these student support services are now all co-located in one space so the students only have to go to one area for all of their support services. On the other side are some, a couple of projects that are still underway, which is our new elevator, that will allow for accessibility on that side of the building, as well as our culinary lab, which is almost complete as well. As I mentioned before, we have some exterior projects that were completed. The main street parking lot was complete this summer. And we have the front addition that's still underway as well.
I think the construction thus far on the high school has been probably about 40 million over the last two summers. And there was a fair chunk of that that was completed over this last summer during the school year. It was a lot. So what's left? Well, we have a number of items that remain on our Build 220 plan. We do have a voiceover IP phone system that we'll be deploying across the district to upgrade our ancient phone system. I think we're celebrating 50 years on our phone system, isn't that right?
More.
We have ongoing safety and security improvements at our schools that are taking place. We've got the two additions that we talked about. And then we actually have a lot of work that still remains at the high school. We have the culinary arts space, which is underway, should be delivered soon. The front addition that Nicole mentioned, the elevator that was mentioned. We have the cafeteria that is being renovated, some athletic work. There's the athletic entrance. You can see a rendering of that particular entrance for students on the side. We've got some air conditioning and other HVAC work in the building, mechanical upgrades. We do have the Harp Road parking lot. So we did the main street parking lot this last year. Next summer, we will be doing the Harp Road lot. So there'll be a lot of improvements there. We also have in the back of the building, there is the bus turnaround, the cold storage building for buildings and grounds, which was torn down just a few months ago, it was over the summer, and we've got the replacement building going up for that. And building is a bit of an overstatement. It's really just four walls and a roof, it's not really a building. But it's a cold storage space. So there's a lot of work that's left to do at the high school. So where does that leave us from a financial perspective? Well, this should look a little familiar to you. We have, you've seen this before from me. And early on, we talked about, you know, commitment on our schools as we've gone through the process. And last time, we were sitting right about here with Barrington High School. And then we finished up and completed our bidding since then with lines North Barrington Rose and ELC. Really, we're done with our projection. Now, if you add up these numbers, it'll come up a little bit light from 147. We do not know yet exactly where we're going to end. You have contingency dollars that are being used as we go through our construction. So we will be in a better place to tell you exactly what the current cost is for this work and whether there are any remaining funds at all as we get through probably six to nine months. Six months is really a little bit early because we really need to get into the next year's construction season to see exactly where that spending goes. And we've got probably about 20 to 25 million left to spend at the high school, is the largest chunk. That's a lot of money. So we do have a bit of contingency that is still available. So I can't tell you exactly where it will end. I'm hopeful that there'll be at least a little bit of money that is left over, but we're not planning to be over budget. We are planning to come in within budget and preferably under budget. One other item I'll mention to you, board, is that we actually hit the sweet spot on borrowing for this project. As you may recall, going back a few years, when we started to issue bonds, interest rates were really low. Following that, interest rates ticked up quite a bit. So we went from investments at 0.1% to investments at 4% or more. So we actually have some interest earnings that we will realize from this investment. Now those interest earnings will be available to use for these projects or to transfer into another location, use some other way. And we can talk about that once we get to next summer and we are really essentially spending down the remaining funds. You will probably hear us talk about anti-arbitrage rules at that time. So I'm just going to give you a heads up, it's a bit of a weird phrase, but we've issued tax-exempt bonds. That's one of the reasons we got favorable interest rates. However, the federal government, as part of that, says that you cannot invest your funds at a rate higher than what you are paying. So you can't borrow, pay a really low interest rate, and then invest at a high interest rate and keep the difference. So, all right, that's, the arbitrage is when you actually do that, and anti-arbitrage rules are the ones that prevent you from doing that. So, we have in fact invested at higher rates, we're investing at the market rate. And it's not a problem. Simply, we will have to pay back to the federal government the difference between what we would have earned if we invested at most at what we're borrowing at and what we actually borrowed at. The federal government does a review on this, they let us know exactly what we need to permit, and we have in fact been planning for that. But I think we will actually, despite that, end with probably close to at least a couple million dollars in interest earnings at the end that we will have available to think about how do we want to use those funds. Just wanted to let you know about that. We'll have those numbers better sussed out as we get to next summer and then certainly as we get into next year in the fall, when we'll really have the bulk of the spending That concludes our Build 220 update for you. Or are there any questions that Nicole or I could answer for?
So, there, thank you for all the work and getting so many things done before school started so students could take advantage of all these new things and the community can see it and do it. I see a lot of students in the room. The question that has always been asked to me that you did not report about is, are all the bathrooms in the high school updated?
No.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Some of the bathrooms are updated and some are scheduled to be updated next summer. It just so happens that we had a graduate of Barrington High School who was here in the district office, meeting with Samantha. She also stopped and chatted with me for a few minutes and we were talking about the high school. And she was commenting how excited she was to be able to get over there to see the new bathrooms. Because having an upgrade was really important. So even students who graduated four or five years ago are excited to hear about bathroom upgrades. They will be, they will all be done, some are done now.
More than half? More than half?
A little bit more than half.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Can I ask a clar, oh, so clarifying because I've been asked and I don't want people to get excited. The air conditioning is going into the new gym, not the main gym, correct? Because I think there's a misconception out there.
That's correct.
Okay. So sorry to you all. Okay. But we're going to have an awesome air-conditioned multipurpose gym.
Yes, correct.
We'll keep our fans for now, right, for the main one?
Are we done with bids or is there still more for the high school that we have to go out and bid and?
We are done.
Okay, so now it's just work to be done?
That's correct.
Contracts are signed and we're good?
Correct.
Again, kudos to you, Nicole, you've been overseeing a lot of this and to our businessman here, because it's great, you know, on time and on budget and I'm looking forward to even having a little extra to talk about. So that'll be great, hopefully.
That, that front addition includes a commons area, correct? The, for the, or is it just the facade, the, for, sorry, for BHS?
Yeah, so the addition, there's a new commons and the addition.
Inside.
But the existing cafeteria commons area will be renovated this summer.
Oh, okay, got it.
It's kind of a two-phase process. We'll complete the addition first and then move inside next summer.
So that first phase, will we be able, will the students and staff be able to use that new entrance once that's done? Is that this fall or is that a little bit later on?
So the new main entrance is already complete and we're already using it. The commons addition will be complete this fall and be able to be used by students.
Oh, okay, so that's open. So a few weeks ago when school started, it wasn't?
The addition was, the main entrance was open when school started, but the new addition is common, is for the commons, it's actually not the new main entrance. New main entrance is, entrance is complete.
Oh, that, and that was pretty recent, right?
At the end of the summer, yeah.
Okay, because freshman orientation, we were still, I don't think it was quite there. But wow.
Right, right when school started.
Right, it was, right on time. Fantastic.
So it's a little crowded in the cafeterias right now, but once the commons is open, that's, they're going to be able to spread out.
Yeah.
Okay. They will.
What kind of feedback have we gotten from the students so far at the high school?
Yes, students.
Should be there. I knew that was going to be a thing. So I've gotten good feedback from students in the new student support spaces, student services, the PE areas are really, the students seem to like it to have better knowledge of the opinion than I do, but what I've heard has been good feedback.
And we'll be able to see all the spaces except for the new atrium, right? At the tours on the Saturday.
That's correct.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
Yeah, this is great, very, very, very exciting.
Thank you, board.
One more comment. So next week, we're going to hear, or next board meeting, we're going to hear about the fine arts. I'm assuming that presentation may be a little bit longer.
That's correct.
So, board, please, please know that in two weeks, that fine arts presentation's probably a little bit longer than, than our agreement of 10 minutes, so be prepared for that. And read through all of the great information beforehand. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Full-day kindergarten.
Next up.
Dr. Bind is staying. We've got a few more guests coming up to join him.
Yeah, we need another chair.
Thanks to all the students for staying.
Yeah, thank you.
But somehow.
We appreciate it anyway. Do you have to take a picture at the end, too? I want to know. Do you have to take a picture at the end showing you?
Well, I already got myself going.
All right, let's hear about full-day kindergarten. Can we just get plugged in here?
Melissa's getting ready. I do just want to acknowledge, you know, obviously, we've been talking about full-day kindergarten for the last several months and really want to compliment our team for doing a thorough review and really looking at, you know, this proposal from a lot of different vantage points. And I think they put together, to Sandra's point, this presentation also will be a little bit longer and the memo was a little bit longer than our typical length, but there's a lot of parts to this to consider so that we really come out of the gate strong with a program that we can implement and also then maintain.
All right, ready?
Let's do it.
Okay, thank you so much for having us tonight. So as a reminder, bringing us back to our mission statement of empowering personal excellence in every learner. And the strategic priority alignment for tonight is personalized learning. And to be a bit more specific, this presentation is specifically aligned to the objective of early childhood and kindergarten opportunities as it relates to the implementation of full-day kindergarten. And I always love to bring it back to the learner profile, as we've seen evidence all throughout the night with our students represented here tonight, but with the addition of full-day kindergarten, we can truly be optimizing our learner profile. So the overview of tonight's presentation and how everything will be laid out for you, we'll start with an overview of the legislation and the school code that led us here tonight. We'll talk through the evolution of kindergarten in Barrington 220. We'll step through our current conditions as it relates to enrollment facilities and different options. And then end with what a transition to full-day kindergarten would look like for us. So when we think through what it would take to implement full-day kindergarten, it's more than just facilities, it's more than just curriculum. It's really several different things that we need to think through in order to optimize our implementation. So those things are our programming, facilities, curriculum, enrollment, as well as finances. So as it relates to legislation and school code, as you are all aware, on August 2nd of this year, our governor signed House Bill 2396 officially into law, which requires all school districts in the state of Illinois to establish a full-day kindergarten program by the fall of the 27th and 28th school year. And with this legislation and the Illinois school code, school districts are still required to offer a half-day kindergarten option for students and families who would like that. Moving on to the evolution of kindergarten in Barrington 220. So prior to the 2016, 2017 school year, families selected either an AM kindergarten option or a PM kindergarten option. And in the fall of 2016, 2017 school And in the fall of 20, the 2016-2017 school year, the district implemented our kindergarten enrichment program. And then in the 2018-2019 school year was our last year of standalone half-day kindergarten section, which was an AM section that was housed at Grove. Now we're going to step you through what our current programming looks like from a scheduling and curriculum perspective. As a district, what we currently offer is a half-day kindergarten program with optional enrichment. With the half-day program, all of our core instruction is provided in the morning. For those who are participating in the optional enrichment program, students have the opportunity to extend their learning and participate in specials during this time. So the schedule that you see on the screen is what students receive as part of our half-day kindergarten program. With a full-day kindergarten program, students would attend school based on our current elementary day from 8:00 AM to 2:40 PM, with the opportunity to extend core instruction throughout the school day. So on the screen, and the next several screens actually, is what a sample schedule could look like with the implementation of full-day kindergarten. So this is what the morning could look like, and the rest of the morning, and the afternoon. So you might be wondering, well, what are the major differences between our current half-day program and full-day kindergarten? Because it might seem simple from the outside to switch from half-day or half-day plus enrichment to full-day. But we really have a fantastic opportunity to really make sure we're implementing best practice. So the implementation of full-day kindergarten program, and what that would mean from a curriculum perspective, would be 35 additional minutes for core literacy instruction. So that's more time for reading, more time for vocabulary instruction, and building strong foundational skills in all of our kindergarten learners. An additional 30 minutes for core math instruction, which could certainly include small group differentiation, as well as strong independent practice. An additional 20 minutes for core science, social global studies, and health instruction. An additional 50 minutes for core specials instruction. And then 60 minutes for purposeful play and movement. Now we're going to step you through our current conditions as it relates to enrollment facilities and different options that we've been thinking through, the ones that we feel are most viable at this point. First up, our enrollment and projections. So based on the six-day enrollment report for the '23-'24 school year, we are currently sitting at 434 kindergarten students. So of those 434 students, 402 of those kindergartners are currently accessing our kindergarten enrichment program. If I'm doing my math correctly, that leaves 32 students who are at this point half-day only. This next slide walks you through the current enrollment projections based on the CASADA report. And we're using the Series B projections, which as a reminder, Series B means that projections are as currently anticipated. And what you see on the screen are the enrollment projections over the course of the next three school years. The table on this screen shows that over the past decade, there has been an enrollment increase between kindergarten and first grade. Our anecdotal evidence is that many of these students are attending private full-day programs, which leads to the assumption that a full-day program in the district would result in a kindergarten enrollment increase. And the other important piece of information to keep in mind here is cap and send. So this year, we are currently sending nine of our kindergartners to other elementary schools to accommodate for the space. Now Dr. Bynum's going to step us through the facilities.
Great. We're back in the Blueprint 220 process. We did have DLR take a look at our space. Yes, right here at Blueprint 220. Fantastic. It's not where it was supposed to be. All right, yeah, let's go on one more. All right. So Board, at, at that time, DLR took a look at each of our elementary schools. He was taking a look at a couple of different things. He was taking a look at the site size, and how that looks relative to state of Illinois guidelines based on enrollment. He also looked at interior space, to take a look at where are we relative to square feet per student, relative to other construction that was happening at the time. And what you can see here, this is just one example of what that looked like for Huff, where the enrollment would indicate that we should have a site of approximately eight acres. We actually have a site of closer to two acres. And of course, this is our downtown school, and it is surrounded by residential development. There really isn't an opportunity at this particular school to increase the site size. So, but the look at that would, would indicate really tough to do an addition that would be attached to Huff, for example, because we really already have a small site. So if you go to the next slide, you can see, what did this look like on the interior? And here, as this example would indicate, we have 98 square feet per student, or at least we did at that time, versus a 149 square feet per student as the national low quartile for your elementary schools that opened in 2015. So we are under fairly significantly at Huff, and that's just indicative of the fact that we have to be very careful with our space utilization inside our schools. And this next slide will show you how did this break down across the district as we look at our, our other elementary schools. And what I'll note for you are a couple things. First is that, from a site perspective, we have relatively small sites. They're, they're, most are at or below the state guidelines. Barbara Rose is a great exception to that, at site at 333% of the state guideline. It's quite large, and Board, as you know, we do have a large chunk of property available there. And I believe before my time at the district, this was always contemplated as a potential spot where an additional school, or various kind addition could be placed if warranted. And, and that certainly this, this research would, would support that. The, the other schools, countryside, that has a fairly large site as well, although there are others that certainly have a good size site. So from a site size, we've got some that are quite small, others that are somewhere near the state guideline, a couple that are large. When we take a look at the interior space. When we take a look at the interior space, though, what we see is that, in most cases, we are tight. This, the feedback here really is indicative of our space being precious within our schools. And we need to be careful on how we utilize it, because there isn't a lot of extra space within our schools. So we also did a, an internal assessment, where administratively, with our building leaders, we took a look at our space. And what happens if we did have new enrollment in kindergarten? And how could we accommodate that? And it was a little bit of a Goldilocks story, that we have a couple schools where we think we might be able to accommodate some increase in enrollment. We have a couple schools where we've already made compromises with the space utilization that we have in, inside our buildings in order to accommodate the current enrollment. And we have four schools that are just right. And with the enrollment that we have today, we don't have to make any compromises with the space. But if we did have increased enrollment, we would need to make some other compromises. And of course, kindergartners don't come in nice lumps, where you would get 20 kindergartners at one school in nice, one-classroom increments. They tend to be spread around the district, and it can be harder to predict. All right, that was the results of our internal assessment, which again reinforced the notion that space is precious within our schools. We also asked DLA to do a review of our schools, and help develop some options. And the work that DLA did, again, came back with, you're doing a good job with the space inside your buildings, you really don't have a lot of extra space that's available. So as we look at what options do exist, what, what we have are really a couple things. It's very difficult to grab any additional space within our buildings. So we can, we can add new space outside of our elementary schools. And that addition possibility does exist. And I'll talk more about that in a moment. We could also consider potential renovation at an alternate facility, and we'll talk about that again in a moment. So we could do additions, we think, at Barbara Rose or North Barrington. Now, or, it is of course possible to do a couple more classrooms at Grove. And that was something that was discussed a couple of years ago. The challenge there is, right now, if we were to do some additional additions, it probably would impact the, the playground, the PTO-supported playground that's put in, which is recently refreshed. It's a little more challenging on that site to figure out exactly that layout at this point in time. So we think that probably Barbara Rose or North Barrington might make the, the most sense today. A typical kindergarten classroom for new construction might be somewhere around 1,200-1,400 square feet. Doing a, a few classroom addition, you know, one, two, three, four, maybe classroom addition, rough estimate might be about $1,000 a square foot to do that work. And we looked at a number of scenarios with DLA, where they said, well, there might be some places you could even do a four-classroom addition if you really wanted. But if you imagine, just using an estimate of some common space, maybe it's a 3,000 square foot addition at $1,000 a square foot, that's about a $3 million addition. Now, the final design of an addition, even in a two-classroom addition, it might be more than 3,000 square feet, it depends on where it is, how much additional space we want to tack on, in terms of maybe a flexible learning area right outside the classrooms, the site prep would influence this. There are a number of factors, so please don't take $3 million to the bank, but just trying to give you a ballpark idea as to what those costs might be if we were to do a, a small addition in the school. What DLA also identified, in conjunction with the work that it has been doing with the financial performing arts space at the high school, was that we might have an opportunity to do some renovation at the high school. This is a, a non-traditional concept of, of doing kindergarten. Why would we put kindergarten at a high school? And Dr. Byrne will talk about that in just a moment. But I wanted to at least give you the cost idea by means of comparison to doing an addition at elementary. The classrooms that we would be looking at, there are three classrooms that are adjacent to our Little Broncos program. And we wouldn't be looking at moving walls, we'd mostly be doing some plumbing work on some spaces to make sure we had bathrooms in those rooms for kindergartners. We think the renovation cost might be somewhere around a half a million dollars. We would also need to refresh a playground. And we do have a playground in the physics courtyard. There are some, some site prep issues there, it's a little more challenging to get into that space in the interior space. We think that might be around $300,000. But let's just, for purposes of conversation, let's talk about it being maybe a million dollars. And we could do that, provide a couple classrooms at perhaps a third of, or less of the cost of doing additions at, at one of our elementarys. Dr. Byrne, would you like to talk a little more about what this program would look like?
I would love to say more.
All right.
The development of a kindergarten lab program would be connected to our Little Broncos program, as well as our education pathway, that leads to a career pathway endorsement for our high school students. There are many aspects of this option that are unique, including the opportunity for kindergarten students to participate in learning that is connected to both career exploration and career pathways, provide an extension to our Little Broncos program, provide onsite work-based learning for our education pathway students, create leadership opportunities for our high school students in various departments, and create a demonstration space for educators to model and observe best pa, best practice kindergarten instruction. At this point in time, and we verified this with Illinois State Board of Education, they verified that we are the first school district in the state to consider an option in a program such as this. So this would be a fantastic opportunity for our district to again be leading the way.
So we all have little Dr. Hallbergers.
So as we transition to full-day kindergarten, before, the transition to full-day kindergarten, and what that would look like, what I would like to mention before we go to the staffing slide, is what we also have to be thinking through is where do we house our half-day kindergarten program? So those 32 students currently right now that are accessing our half-day option, we're thinking at this point in time, it would be the most viable to house the half-day program at the Early Learning Center. So now moving on to staffing, with the implementation of full-day kindergarten, there would be some staffing implications, of course. This would include the potential addition of one to four teachers, depending on the increase in enroll, enrollment as previously discussed in the presentation. There may also be a need for an additional four to five special services assistants in order to support our learners with IEPs. And we know that one to four, four to five, sounds inspecific and a little vague, but it really is dependent on the increase in enrollment that we actually do see, so we want to be able to account for all of that.
You might wonder, how does this work from a financial perspective? And I'd like to remind you that we talked a little bit before about including some costs in our five-year forecast, our most recent five-year forecast. Include 1.3 million in costs. And it's really a combination, the big financial trade-off in full-day kindergarten is that we lose the, the enrichment revenue, just about a million dollars. We've also factored in about $300,000 in staff costs. Although staff costs may change, really depends on exactly what the staffing requirements are, where our settlement comes in, you don't really know exactly compensation levels. But I think probably $300,000, $500,000 is probably a reasonable estimate in that range. And we've got a big portion of that already reflected in our long-range forecast. Those are a couple of the large impacts. We also then have, what about facilities? And what do we do from a facility side? If we were to do a two-classroom addition at one of our elementary schools, four-classroom addition, once we talk, we could be looking $3 million, give or take. Double that if you're going for a four-classroom addition, or you're doing a couple additions at different schools. Another option, what we think is, is the best option in front of us based on the things that Dr. Byrne mentioned, the excitement about doing something at the high school, also from a cost perspective, we'd be looking at closer to a million dollars in cost. Funds to be able to support that regardless of which direction we go on the facility side, we would look to the Capital Projects Fund as a likely place where we'd be able to draw some, some funds to be able to support doing the work. That's really viable on a million-dollar addition, or a million-dollar renovation. Or if you're looking at doing classroom additions at a couple schools, that no longer becomes a real viable option, we could get some money from the Capital Projects Fund. We might be looking then at a DSET issuance as a possible place that you could borrow some funds to be able to complete that, that construction work. If we were to use operating funds to do the one-time facility cost, we wouldn't be looking at what cost-reduction options exist in order to accommodate.
So to conclude our presentation tonight, our administrative team will continue to build a recommendation for the Board to consider at your October 17th meeting, which will include a proposal for renovated classrooms at Barrington High School to build a kindergarten lab program, as well as a proposal to house half-day kindergarten at our Early Learning Center.
There must be some questions?
Yeah, sure, I'll go.
Awesome, thank you guys so much. Obviously, I completely understand you are at the very beginning of this concept. But as a parent with younger kids and high school kids, A, would the kindergarten, would the program at the high school be optional?
Yes, it would be.
And then, like, timing-wise, like, elementary school obviously is at different hours than the high school. Exposure to, I know you have the Little Broncos program there, but, you know, exposing five-year-olds, six-year-olds to the lovely high school students, which I have two. I, I guess, how would you keep them separate? To a degree, I mean, where would they eat, where would they, all, all the things? Where would they, all the things? And what would you do from a timing perspective and a busing perspective?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the timing perspective is one of our considerations as we continue forward with our planning, because right now our elementary day is from 8:00 to 2:40. Which, you're right, is different than the high school. So, we would need to step through, do we change the timing to align better with the hours of the high school? But in relation to where would the kindergarten lab program be housed, it would actually be in that same area of Little Broncos, so we would accommodate for them to eat the same way we do with Little Broncos and make sure that food is provided within their spaces and access to their own bathrooms, so they're not having to go elsewhere throughout the school. And with the connection to the career pathways and career exploration, that would be more of a push-in model. So, for example, with the career pathway endorsement for the education pathway, students are required to complete a 60-hour internship. And the majority of our high school students who are currently in that pathway are going off-site to complete their internship. So, many of those students could complete their internship hours at the high school in the kindergarten lab spaces. But we would absolutely be mindful of all of that and include that in our.
Just to play devil's advocate, wouldn't it make sense to have the kindergarten kids arrive and leave when the high school kids are not arriving and leaving, so they don't get trampled? You know, so they can get in. And then, the high school kids come later and they're ready safely in their room, and then they leave before the high school kids leave. I mean, there may be some advantage, you know. The teachers may feel a little disjointed because some of the teachers are coming later or, you know, leaving later, but I'm just playing devil's advocate there.
And those are all things that we would absolutely consider, looking at transportation and the routes and all those things.
Exactly. And then, are we committed to doing this next fall? Or are we maybe rushing things and maybe looking at fall of '25? I'm just, you know, obviously, there's still a lot of proposals on the table, and if we do have construction, and I realize, like, adding onto the schools would definitely not be able to be done next summer, but, you know, even doing the high school, you know, are we rushing things, I guess, is what I'm asking? I mean, I'm excited to do this. I just don't know if it's reasonable.
At this point in time, we do not believe we're rushing with the options that we presented tonight and if we were to move forward with the kindergarten lab option with the renovated spaces. And yes, while we do have until '27, '28 to implement full-day kindergarten, we do believe we are ready.
You think it's reasonable to get it by next?
To start, even next fall.
Period. I would also comment, I mean, we're not rushed at this point.
Maybe rushed.
But if discussions were to continue for several months and we start getting to the end of the fall, you know, approaching the winter break, in addition to being able to notify the state for us even to be in a position to implement. So, there is a timeline to the making a decision and a recommendation and then giving our team time to respond to that and then start to work with coming up with a construction plan and timing of that and being able to go and secure the ability to do those renovations that Dr. Bynum has mentioned. So, we're within the window right now. It really depends on where these conversations go and where we're able to land sometime this fall with the decision. I also want to just take a minute, I want to be really clear, because there's already two questions about high school students and kindergartners. And I want to be really clear, we have had a Little Broncos program at Barrington High School for a long time without any incident of any kind of negative interaction between our little guys that are even younger than kindergartners in that building. They do arrive now at the same time, depending on when parents are dropping off. We do try to manage that as far as passing period. Of course, we don't march a bunch of Little Broncos out at the same time as the high schoolers. So, all those same considerations will be built in. But I do think it is worth noting that some of the concerns or challenges about the age level, I really don't believe are major obstacles. Otherwise, we wouldn't bring this recommendation forward from the beginning. So, I understand the concern, but I also want to point out that we have a long history of being able to provide that as a district for even younger students.
Guess adding on to the comment so far, is there any, we predict any cost savings if we, you know, renovate those high school classrooms now versus in a different year, different summer?
Certainly. There is an inflation component that happens over time. So, we've been looking at four or five-plus percent increase in construction costs over time. If we do this, we believe that if the board comes to a decision on the recommendation in October, that we have sufficient time to finish design work and go off the bid and still be within a favorable bidding window to get this work done in preparation for the '24, '25 school year. If it goes beyond that, we would likely be looking at the '25, '26 school year. We would delay that, and there would be some increase in the renovation costs associated.
So, I just want to say that I'm really excited about this, first of all. I feel, I remember around this time last year, I think this board, and now with Diana, that initiated these conversations, and it was, and it's really, I'm just really grateful to see the thoughtfulness that I see Carrie from DLA here. Thank you for partnering with us. I know that when we threw it out, we're like, "Oh, yeah, why can't we just, like, make it full-day?" And of course, there are so many considerations with space and how this would work. And I really appreciate just your thinking through step-by-step what it would take to implement it and being innovative, too. So, I just have a couple of clarification questions. So, if we did the high school kindergarten lab, would we still need the additions to the elementary? Would that replace? So, it's either-or. So, it's either that $1 million expenditure or roughly $3 million with two, but not wedded to that number.
That's correct. That's with a two-classroom addition.
Two classrooms.
If the board wanted to do four classrooms, for example, we believe we can accommodate two at the high school, and then we'd be looking at two others somewhere else, which would be an addition cost.
And so, roughly, how many kindergartners would we be thinking if we did, if we move ahead with the high school lab kindergarten program?
So, we're thinking two sections.
Two sections.
Right? And we have 23 students in a section at kindergarten, right? That's our upper limit. So, somewhere around 46 students. Now, to answer your question of timing, right, we know that there's, based on 10 years of information of the difference between kindergarten and first grade, the range is somewhere around 40 to 60, right? I think this opportunity of creating two classrooms gives us an immediacy to it that we can, Barry's point, we know we're not having a new addition at a site anytime soon, right? That takes a longer time to do that process and actually construct a classroom addition. It could be a, that's enough, based on, we build it, we see who comes, we transition from a half-day with a paid enrichment option to a full-day. Maybe two classrooms is enough, but that doesn't stop this board or future boards from also monitoring our enrollment and saying, "You know what? We actually have more students than that 40 to 60." We now have a way to then, you know, enact, maybe we want to do a classroom addition in a year or two at one of those schools.
We look at growth.
So, it's going to be, it gives the board an option, in other words, to kind of phase this as well.
Right. So, to Katie's point about it being voluntary, would we, we would just kind of survey parents who have incoming kindergartners and say, "Hey, we have this kindergarten lab program at BHS. Is this how it would work?"
Yeah.
Would you be willing?
To build the program proposal and branding.
Okay. And we're pretty confident that we may have, I guess it's hard, it's so hard to say now, but would we be at some point making it compulsory if we don't have enough kindergartners who are, whose families are willing to send them to BHS?
Lab program being compulsory?
Yeah, just for space reasons.
Is that something that we would have to think for? At this point, it would be an optional program to participate in?
To start with, okay.
But we are cap and sending today.
The cap.
I was just going to say that, you know, for the last several years.
We've had cap and.
We've had 10, 12, 15 students that we're right now doing. So, that we already know there are students that every year are not where, they would, we would ideally, because to Dr. Bynum, the break happened bad, right? Like, we were over the 46 students, and sometimes it happens by three, sometimes it could happen by seven.
And they go back to their home schools for first grade, usually, right?
We actually work with families.
To see what they would like to do.
Yeah.
And then, are we expecting a, like, a large need to do cap and send if we, when we do expand, or not really, like, in terms of our current school?
No, the reason the team's bringing this forward is it actually solves that, we believe.
With the BHS program.
Yeah, this program could give us more breathing room across the district.
The high school in addition to the ELC, right? So, there would be essentially three new classrooms.
Right, so the ELC classroom and then two at the high school for the lab.
And the ELC could house two sections of kindergarten if we had that many interested in half-day.
So, we didn't.
There is space, yes.
So, we do not currently have a career pathway specifically for kindergarten teacher, but where we.
So, we have an education career pathway.
Right, we have that.
That leads to a career pathway endorsement, but part of that endorsement is students completing their 60 internship hours as part of that. But there is no public school, K-12 school in the state of Illinois that's offering a kindergarten lab program, like the University of Chicago and the John Dewey Lab School. It's a pretty huge lab school. And then, the Illinois State Lab School, but those are housed on university campuses.
Right.
So, this would be the first one in the state that would be actually housed in K-12 for kindergartners.
That's right. So, the concept is like University of Chicago Lab School, something like that, but we would have our own at the high school. Yeah, it is enticing to be the first.
Well, and I think it speaks to our community talked a lot during the last year with Strategic Plan about harnessing the power of being a unit school district. We have a unique opportunity, being a unit district, to actually have a solution that benefits the experience of both our high school students as well as our elementary and our earliest learners as kindergartners, right? And we're kind of focusing on the college and career pathway students. We already know that they're going off-site to go, you know, work with our students, our younger learners throughout the district in order to achieve the 60 hours. But I think there's a lot of potential with this program beyond those students to also have other opportunities for students to interact. Like, right now, we have our PE leaders at Barrington High School that go in and work with our Little Broncos program. So, there's lots of opportunities. And I think some of the appeal of this, you know, kind of magnet concept is that your child's going to receive additional support and instruction throughout the day in a lot of different ways, as well as access to some of those enrichment opportunities that exist at the high school, because we have a full-blown art wing and a horticulture, if they're learning about plants and so forth. There's tons of potential opportunities that those students that elect to be part of it would have additional.
True, there could be high demand to be part of the lab school.
I actually think if you turn this team loose to, when they come up with a program, I think it would be highly desirable.
Well, and to Dr. Whitman's point about optimizing the fact that we're a unit district, we can potentially be creating the guidelines for our students from our youngest learners to our oldest.
I have a question. With having the kindergartners at the ELC, we've done that in the past, and there were concerns, I know they're only one year different in age, and, you know, some are two years older, younger, I get that, but size of children varies. And even with that one-year difference, I remember there were concerns and issues about the furniture not being the right size, the playground not being the right size, the equipment in the gym not being the right size for kindergartners. So, what would we, we would have to figure out somehow to make that better than it was before, I would suggest.
Yeah.
We'll explore that so that we understand what maybe some of the challenges were from.
Because there were some issues. And also, you know, families want to be in kindergarten at the school they're going to be in first grade at. So, there's trade-offs on these things. There are a lot of families, because we've had that happen before, too, where you've got kindergarten there and then you went to a different school, and they didn't feel a part of it because they hadn't been there, you know? And there was an additional transition from being a little child at one building and then going to a new school, and, you know, we can figure this out, but.
It's the same with the high school. They did the high school.
Yeah. Right, so that's just.
It would be flipping, you know, once we offer full-day, right? Then, the half-day kind of becomes the optional program, right? And when you choose to do that, then part of that option would be to attend at a different school.
Those students who are currently not attending kindergarten district are experiencing exactly what you described. They're going to kindergarten somewhere, and then they're transitioning to the new school.
And that's a hard, you know, predict the numbers on those, too, is hard, because you've got, I'm sure we can look more closely at what the different options are and, you know, if they're full-day or enrichment and, you know, make a magic guess, but, you know, we'll see.
Not to belabor this, but, Dr., I appreciate you bring up that. I'm going to tell you that most parents, especially of elementary school or new parents, they have no idea of Little Broncos. They have no idea that exists. So, I personally, as a parent, I feel like your biggest hurdle is going to be convincing parents that this is a safe, welcoming, nurturing environment for a five-year-old to walk into. So, I would really focus on getting that point across, because I think that that's going to be a hard sell for some parents.
It's good feedback.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's really good feedback.
I have a question about in the CASADA projections. So, today we have 434, I think it was, something like that. How does that compare to what the Series B was for this year? Is it pretty close? We looked at what it's going to be in the coming years on, I forget which side, number 19, but how close were we this year?
I would have to go back and read that. I don't have the full CASADA report.
I just want to, I want to think about that, because I want to see, are we, the difference right now is 40 to 60 kids every year between kindergarten and first grade. I really feel like, I feel a little bit, I don't think you're going to have any problem getting people to sign up. I do agree with you, Katie, that we need to, you know, make sure we address it, but I think if you build it, they will come, right? And we've had several programs where we've, that we've built, and we've had more people come into the district, too, because of these great programs. And if we're first, right, if we're, you know, several years ahead of the schedule, I think they will come, right? And we will have more kindergartners. I think we'll be talking about space. I'm very happy to hear about, you know, the cost at, what would cost at Rose and North Barrington and even Grove. Grove would be a little bit more, because we'd have to do a little bit more work there. I'm always in favor of a centrally-located, you know, additions as well. It might be worth the extra cost. But I think we'll be talking about those additions soon. That's my prediction. So, I don't think it's a trade-off. Do it at the high school, and you're not going to have to do it anywhere else. I think we're going to be considering it elsewhere soon. So, yeah, so I want to, thank you for that. I just want to, I want to learn more about the projections and how we're aligning there.
The only comment I had, and just as you're thinking about, like, opt-in or not, is maybe even thinking about, like, our language immersion programs, because, I mean, those schools are already really tapped, and they're already not going to home schools anyway, so that might be another consideration to just think about housing them in that lab environment. And it might, I don't know, it could be kind of cool for your Chinese and Spanish immersion kids to be in an environment that might help them learn, you know? It might be set up for them to learn a little bit more expansively as well in that kindergarten environment as well.
That's interesting.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, this is very exciting.
This is great. Thank you.
All right. Where are we on our agenda? I think that's our last discussion, our second-to-last discussion item. Our last discussion item is our agenda for October 3. We would be, as we've already discussed, approving, we'll have a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 academic calendar. We've already talked about, we would have a discussion on fine and performing arts. And then, we would also have a discussion on BHS course offerings. I think another very exciting meeting.
Yeah.
See, reminders are another.
Is this possibly bringing a BTP property?
Oh, that's right.
That should have.
Ah, that should have, yeah.
Thank you for the reminder, we'll add that.
Thank you. All right, and we would also do our self-evaluation. So, reminder to please let us know if you will not be able to be there by 4:30, foreclosed.
And that's right after your ribbon cutting, right?
Dr. Bynum, I assume that will affect the finance meeting then somehow?
That's correct. Given where we are, we may cancel that meeting. I don't know that we have to have that given where we are with financial support.
I'm just pretty certain we'll have closed session items. You know, and I guess another option off the route there for the board is, we could go back into close after open as well. If we weren't able to start at 4:30, we didn't want to impact the other meeting. Do you want to stick to 4:30? 4:30? Okay.
I think we all prefer to get the close done.
All right, and it was a good reminder, somebody said that we've got the ribbon cutting. I know I just read it.
At 3:00, I think.
At 3:00 o'clock, okay, so no impact there.
So, it's likely going to be ELC ribbon cutting. Dr. Bynum will finalize, but it sounds like we may not have a need for finance. And then, we would have 4:30. And then we would have 4:30 start for closed.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Everybody stick around, we got a sign.